Regular meeting, session meeting, beginning at 6:30 at 25 Oak Drive. We'll have to begin with pledge allegiance by Councilman Broaddus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one indivisible.
And the invocation will be given by Councilman Baker tonight.
Let us pray. Dear Most Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, a day we never see again. Most Heavenly Father, thank you for yielding us here on tonight as we get prepared to discuss city business, just be with us and bless us to provide the best knowledge that we can for the city of enchantment. And then Most Heavenly Father, just bless our first responders, firefighters, law enforcement, NEMS, as they protect us on a daily basis. And then as we get ready to leave this place on today, just give us travel and grace and let us return home safely. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Next item is visitor comments. This is an opportunity for visitors that are in the audience, if they have an item that they would like to discuss with council or praying to council that is not on the agenda, being consent agenda or regular agenda. If anyone has something they want to speak to council about. All right. We'll move on to presentations. Robin, you want to make your introduction?
Yes. I know some of you met him at the budget meeting, but I want to introduce Matt Cohen. He is our new general manager for the Wilderness Golf Course. So I'm going to let him come up and give you a little information about himself and tell, let him tell you all about.
All right.
Thanks, Robin. Good evening, everybody. Robin doesn't know me well enough to know not to put a microphone in front of me. Probably have to add 30 minutes to your agenda this evening. But no, I, it's an honor to be here. I'm really excited to be here and working with all of you. Relatively new to Kemper Sports, the company that manages the golf facility for the city, but equally honored to be, be part of Kemper Sports and their family, I think you will find. I think many of you already know, having worked with Kemper and with Val DeSosa, my boss, who's seated next to Robin. It's a company that is very much based on principles that I think are values that you all hold dear to your hearts too, in terms of relationships, communication, treatment of individuals, valuing, respecting, and honoring our customers, our employees, the people we work for, the people we work with. So it is truly a career accomplishment to have landed with a company as quality as Kemper Sports, and I'm extremely excited to be representing them. Extremely excited to be representing the city and the golf facility. I think we've got some incredible staff members out there. We've got an incredible facility and an asset for the citizens to enjoy and for the benefit of the entire region. And just very excited about the future and bringing 25 years of knowledge and industry experience to this facility and continuing to improve what's already a fantastic, fantastic golf experience. So just again, honored to be here, just feel like I'm drinking from a fire hose, figuring it all out, you know, trying to learn the people and the, you know, the logistics of the facility and the city and how everything interfaces with each other. But I am here for every one of you, every person in this room, every citizen in Lake Jackson, if there's anything I can do to make it a better golf experience, to add to the community, to partner with anyone in the community, that's, we want to be an active, vibrant, and contributing member to Lake Jackson. We want to be very much a part of this community and hopefully for decades and years and years and years to come. So that's, that's it. I'm, I live in Tyler right now, but we're buying a house in about a week.
We being?
In Rose Sharon.
We being?
My wife, my wife Kelly, I've been married 20 years. She's fantastic. I've got two kids. My son Evan is 16, be 17 soon, be a junior in high school. My daughter Angelina is 15. She's going into her freshman year in high school. So not the ideal time to move kids, but you know, we're making it work. And again, it's a blessing and an honor and an opportunity to be here that makes some of the heartache of moving teenagers palatable. But they remind me every now and then that I'm not necessarily the best dad in the world right now, but maybe I'll get back there.
Well, they'll get to experience our new high school that's opening up, so.
There's a lot of.
Replacing our high school after 50 years, so we've got a new one coming, opening up this fall.
It's exciting. Now, there's, there's a lot of great things about this community that I'm just starting to find out, so we're, we're very excited to be, to be a part of it and, and the family will, will as well. And I know once they get down here and we get, we get settled and we're all under one roof again, things will, things will smooth out, so. But no, it's just thrilled to be here and I'm at your disposal. Anything any of you need, please get in touch with me at the golf course and I'm there for you.
All right. Welcome very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Matt. Yep. Next item we have in presentation is a city investment report. James?
Good evening, counsel. So the last few weeks you've been working with the budget, which is revenue expenditure side of the city. Tonight we're going to talk cash and investments, which is the balance sheet side of the city. The city's investment report is tied to the public fund, Public Fund Investment Act, which governs the way the city invests its money. When we're looking at investments, we're looking for safety, liquidity, and yield. So as of 6:30 of 2022, in First National Bank, which is the operating account for the city, which is what we pay our accounts payable and payroll out of, you had the $8.2 million, which makes up close to 12% of the total investment for the city of, which is Or, yes. Okay. The next three investments that you have are the pooled accounts, text pool, text store, and public funds. These are all pools that the city invests in. The text store account is where your bond and grant money is that pays for your CIP projects. And within the text store accounts, each of the bond issuances have an individual account, and that's how we track the money that the bonds were spent on. The text pool and the public fund account, First Public, are what you would consider your reserve allocation, reserve requirements, which is pretty much the savings accounts for the city. And lastly, you have the CD at Texas Gulf Bank, which is $100,000. That's the only investment that is actually going out for one year. The other investments that you have, from a liquidity perspective, you can take out on a daily basis. So from a safety perspective, everything's collateralized either through FDIC insurance or through agencies that these pools or the national bank put aside for us. From a liquidity perspective, everything's within a daily basis. You can take your money out immediately. And from a liquidity perspective, I mean, from a yield perspective, obviously rates have not been great over the last few years, but they are starting to tick up. So because we're at such a yield with regard to the day to day, the yield's not very high. But if we were to go out a little bit further and as rates increase, you'll see an improvement in the investment revenue that the city receives. So are there any questions?
Is there, what kind of guidelines are there as far as how we can and how we should invest?
With the public information, the public, I always kept going to say I was going to call it investment, Public Investment Act, you can only do US government treasuries, CDs, some repurchase agreements, but most of them are government agencies that you have to deal with. So we're limited in that aspect. And so based off of that, I mean, there's, there's, there's not a lot you can do with government because it's taxpayer dollars and it's supposed to be protected.
Right.
You know, we're kind of limited.
Okay.
So you said the first, I'm sorry, go ahead. So this is a question on the, on the First National Bank, you said that the FDIC insurance, how does that work on this amount?
Well, so the FDIC insurance would limit you like $250,000 for the, for the account rate. So the difference is going to be collateralized. So what the bank has done is put $12 million in investments aside for us. So when we get up to $10 million in our deposits, we move that money over to the text pool account, which is taking it back out so that we stay at $10 million. So the collateral that the bank has put aside for us never goes more than 120% because those investments are tied to mortgage loans, CMOs. And so that's how we keep our leverage there.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
James, thank you for the exciting report.
Oh, yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is declaration of conflict of interest, and this is where the opportunity for council to declare any kind of conflict of interest they have on a consent agenda or regular agenda item. Is there any declaration of conflict of interest that needs to be stated? Hearing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda, we have item one is approved minutes of July 5th, 2022. Item two is accept boards and commission minutes, that's for planning commission and for LJDC. Item three is accept resignation from traffic commission, a member Brad Whitehead. Item four is award bid number 2206007 for annual electrician service to Brazport Electric with an hourly service call rate of $80 an hour. And item five, award a bid to Brothers Electric Company for the tank mixer improvement project in the amount not to exceed $331,392. I have a motion, or is there a request to remove any item from the agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for consent agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one, two, three, four, and five as written.
Second. And who was second? Benning? All right. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same side? All right. Motion carries. So we move on to regular agenda. Item one is discuss amending, this is a discussion to amending Charter 10, Chapter 10, Animal of Code ordinances to limit the number of animals allowed per household. And we'll start with Bobby Craywon. Yes?
Thank you. Thank you. I come here this evening for my parents that live at 105 Pin Oak. I want to thank each and one of you that I have reached out to, talked to me, came and fixed some of the code enforcements that we've had, some discrepancies on. There's discrepancies all over the place, and I think each one of you got a copy of the codes and ordinances that, that I had disagreed with. Okay, let's say that. So thank you. I want to thank those that came out, looked it up, tried to correct it to the code, number two, to the code. We still got 15 dogs living next door to us. The reason you're not getting complaints from anyone else in the community around us is the people on one side don't live there and the people on the other side do not live there. So the only people that is truly affecting right now is my folks. There's 15 dogs. Is there a nuisance there? Is there barking there? Is there smells there? There's 15 dogs. Okay, that's really, I don't have a lot to say because we've been through the code. Everybody's been very nice to go over with me. But is there a way to adopt, revise, amend the code to either accept with some exceptions, amendments, some sort, to help citizens like my folks who are in their 70s and they are waking up, anytime they pull in, pull out, we try to mow, we go to water, the dogs are large aggressive dogs, 15. And I'll end with this, when is it too many? When can she stop? When did we say no more? 15 dogs is a lot of dogs. Matter of fact, animal cruelty says one person, one individual, should probably not have more than six dogs. Texas law says six dogs, and I know that means nothing here in the municipalities. Angleton has codes, Richwood has a code. I'm not asking to change the numbers, the codes. I'm asking you to look at it, case to case basis, whatever we could possibly do to fix this situation or any other situations that could come into as we continue to grow. 15 dogs is a lot of dogs in our small community. That's all I got. My parents would like to speak.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't ask you to give addresses completely, so.
103 Pin Oak is the address.
For you.
Okay, 105 Pin Oak.
And then for speaking, so you live with the same address your parents?
I rent an apartment on Garland.
Okay, so could you give that address? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. 420 Garland, apartment 216, Lake Jackson.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. We were here in February of this year. We came to talk to you about getting an ordinance for the limitation of number of animals you can have in a residential area. At that time, we had a woman renter move into the house next door with 12 dogs. We stated we knew nothing could be done about that situation, but we wished to have an ordinance prohibiting any further renters from having so many animals. You told us you would check into the situation and let us know. A week later, I saw the mayor at a fish fry and he told me that you all were working on it and not to worry about it, they were taking care of it. We are now into July, it's five months later and we haven't heard anything. The woman now has 15 dogs, three cats, and three puppies unless she has sold them since they were born. Even though they are in the garage, the garage runs alongside our bedroom windows. They are either barking or crying most of the night. I am exhausted all the time from lack of sleep. My daughter, seeing how tired her dad and I are, started coming over more before going to work or to help us with the yard work. It has been very difficult for all three of us. Her health has begun to suffer, taking on our problem. I ask you, how would you like to live next door to a dog pound? With dogs barking all day and late into the night? Try balancing your bank account, paying your bills, and balancing your checkbooks in the morning or middle of the day with 15 dogs barking and crying. It doesn't matter what time you try to do it, there's always barking and crying going on. We would just like to know how to get an ordinance limiting the number of animals you can have in a home that is in a residential area. We have nothing against the woman, we just don't need a dog pound next door to us. Not now and not in the future.
The situation that I'm looking at is we moved into this house 43 years ago. It's paid for. The people are renters on both sides, but nobody's living in there except the lady. And from what I'm understanding, she calls it a kennel, that she holds a kennel on Facebook. Okay, so if this is a kennel, is that a business? Would that be considered a business running out of the house? And if it is, is there licenses for these dogs? Is everything up to code with these dogs? I don't know, because every time I try to go over to the side of the house where the dogs, if they're out, will climb that fence and bark and be aggressive toward it. So my question to the city is, how do you, how do you stand a residential area, like where I'm at now, and have a business next to it? Or is it just something that they're picking up off the street and the city's allowing it because they're lenient on the ordinances? I hope we can get something solved with this because it's not a lot of fun. And when I was over there today, I went to the side where the dogs were at, weren't any dogs out there. But there was black garbage bags lined all the way up down the fence line in the back of the house. Now, what's in those black garbage bags? I'm pretty sure it's got stuff to do with the dogs. And it's not a very pretty sight. Not as it should be, but smell, I'm worried about the fleas, I'm worried about, you know, all the other things, including the dogs that are in a garage with the garage door open about this high and barking all the time. In 120 degree weather, or 110 degree weather, let's say, they have a big fan in there and the fan is going all the time, all the time. And it's noisy, the dogs are noisy, and like my wife said, from 10 o'clock at night, we shouldn't have that problem. But it's out there.
One way. All right.
I would appreciate counsel's effort in trying to resolve this problem because it can, it just, it's just not right. It shouldn't be like that.
These bags, they show up just today or they've been there for several days?
They've been accumulating.
They accumulate over.
And there's, there's a few in closer to the front door, too.
So heavy trash is.
One question I had is, does the noise ordinance change based on time?
No, only for construction.
For construction? Okay, I knew there was something in there like that. But residentially speaking, I can be as loud at 2 as I can at 10.
Well, no, because the, it's, our noise is based on the state law and if it's going to be unreasonable, which means disturb, disturb standard person, then it's unreasonable.
Okay.
But I think that's, I don't know if the chief has the call sheets, but people.
But the reasonable, the standard would, would change presumably decibels with time.
Depending on the night, yes. Because a reasonable person doesn't want to be loud noise at 2:00 AM.
Sure, certainly more tolerable at 2:00 PM.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. If you could, we're going to get some information from staff. If you could just, well, if we have questions for, we'll call you back up. All right. I'm sure there'll be questions.
Thank you.
Could we get some information from staff on what you've observed and what we've, actions we've taken against the residents?
Yeah, I think we'll have code enforcement and then maybe the chief can also comment on humane, both departments have looked at the situation.
So as far as observations are concerned, staff has been out on a number of occasions, typically because we've received a complaint. When we do receive a complaint, we do go and investigate. We've spoken with the resident. We've been inside the home, inside the backyard, inside the garage. We didn't see anything which would have constituted any kind of code violation at the time of our visit. Visits, plural.
Okay.
There were, we had asked the resident to mow the yard there in compliance, and then there was a junk vehicle. The junk vehicle has been put in the garage. And then there was some trash that had been picked up on the side, but I don't know if that was handled by code or by humane. A couple of the trash bags, I think, have moved back to the front porch. I think they got broken in the process, but we've got to give them time to move them back. These bags here were not in our initial inspection, so they've happened over the last, you know, several days.
Now, they are.
Between trash pickup days, I'm sure there's accumulation with 15 animals.
So y'all, so y'all went out and done an inspection of the property? And what kind of noise did y'all observe? Did you?
On the occasions I've been there, Councilmember Baker, I did hear the dogs bark when I was close to the garage or when they first saw me, but it was not a prolonged barking. They did subside even while I was on property. It didn't last more than a few minutes. The animals, from what I have observed, are under the voice control of, of the owner and they do respond well to the owner.
Are they large animals or small animals or is it a?
It's a fossil. They're medium. And is she running a business, a kennel?
Well, from, from, from what we have observed, she does have a number of animals and they are all, she calls them her family, they're all chipped to her, they all seem to be cared for by, by veterinary care. I haven't seen any indication that she's selling them or transferring them or advertising for additional. So I don't know necessarily how to answer that one, other than I haven't seen.
We're not sure.
Transfer of animals or indication that animals are being transferred.
And the animals appeared well cared for or yes, very well?
And that would probably, that's probably an answer, maybe the chief can give a better enlightenment since that falls under humane.
Yes, of the calls that we've responded to over there, we could verify that that's the number of animals. There are at times 13 and now 15 animals there. That was an emphasis humane put was to realize that, yes, they're, they're being cleaned up after as quickly as you can. They've been fed, have water, even vet records for all the animals on the property, which for, for someone that has six dogs, that's a lot, just to get all six of them to the vet. But they do bark every time, just like the little Yorkies in my house. If someone approaches the door or they hear something outside, they're going to bark for a period of time until they settle, and that's what's going on here. But when they all do it at one time, it's pretty loud. Now, we, from my knowledge, have we even responded at 2:00 in the morning? I don't think we've gotten a phone call and responded at 2:00 AM about the dogs barking. That would be something we would certainly note in calls if we were to go and, and the issue was a barking dog and we knocked on the door and told them to, you know, you have to keep your dogs quiet, people are sleeping, which would be significant. I mean, it's, can be annoying enough at 1:00 in the afternoon if you're trying to watch TV or something, but 2:00 AM, we get calls for loud music, we get calls for loud parties, just people talking, and for animal complaints, just like this, at 2:00, because people kind of want to be asleep at 2:00 in the morning.
So, I mean, after code enforcement and humane visiting a couple of times, I told, I had advised Ms. Craywon that, that the resident is in compliance with all the ordinances other than the last set of garbage bags, but I wouldn't necessarily say that is a violation. They've not been there really long enough to, to be a violation or health concern. We'd have to go out and look at that again. But they are in compliance with ordinance and we've not been able to confirm or, you know, find any evidence really that they're running a kennel. She's harboring a lot of dogs, but is it a business kennel where she's accepting people, housing them and dogs and then are also selling and profiting in it? Right now, they seem, all the dogs seem to be, belong to her.
That is a piece of the puzzle that's kind of missing. She had, according to our humane ACOs, said something about rescuing dogs, but in the sense of a rescue where you advertise and you see people coming and going, dropping animals off and such, that.
And we've talked to the SPCA, the SPCA says they have no relationship, they don't know that she is a rescuer. So she's not, they're not working, they're not working with her.
So question, so in general, not specific to this case, do you find that our current, like nuisance ordinances address the majority of problems or complaints that you would get it to, you know, complaints that you get?
I'll tell you, in 30-something years of law enforcement, sometimes those are the hardest calls. And speaking of nuisance, like loud music and the reasonable standard, because what's reasonable to one person isn't to the other. And we've had neighbors go back and forth, you know, quite some time. If you ask me would I like to live next door to someone with 15 dogs, I would have to say pretty clearly no. I would have to say pretty clearly no. But they're not in violation at this time.
Yeah, over the years, again, we've had, we've tried to address these, the few times we've had challenges like this, we've addressed it with nuisance. One that goes way back is that we had the resident that was, had a large cat population and was a hoarder. And we ended up getting a call because you could actually smell the urine outside the, the house and the neighbors called. And so we inspected it and we had to work with them and we eventually, we had to go in and remove the residence to do their environmental cleanup, basically. That was probably the worst case that we've had. But again, it was, we handled it because of health codes and also nuisance type issues. I was thinking that there was another one that, again, it was, we were able to handle it by nuisance type deals. The, the challenge that we have, I think that we've, that you would face is that, just in my neighborhood, I have, I had a family that started out with, they had eight dachshunds. And they would walk them every morning. They had, you know, the snow sled type leashes and stuff. And, and they would pick up after their dogs as they walked through the neighborhood. And the dogs were very, very well taken care of. They, they didn't yap at you when they walked by or anything like that. And they just recently moved out of the area, but over the period of time, the animals had passed away and then they were down to two. So, but, and then I have another neighbor that has moved in and they have, they've rescued large dogs. I mean, large mutts, just gangly looking mutts. And they have six of them. And they, they walk them every morning and every evening. And they're, again, well behaved, they don't bark at people. The people pick up after their dogs and, you know, and they don't chase after me the few times I get out on a bicycle. So that's a good thing. So, you know, it's, it gets back to is that, you know, if, if you go over there and you put a number, put a count on restricting the number of animals, it's like, where do you put the number? Because again, there's good, there's people that can handle a large number of animals, there's people that can't handle one. And that one that they can't handle can be a nuisance. And so that we have a nuisance ordinance that helps us address those. So that's why we've, over the years, the few times we've had people come to us and address, ask this question, is that we've said that we've been able to handle with our nuisance ordinances. And now it comes to mind, what we had was, the other incident was, we had a family that was actually breeders. They were breeders and we had to address that issue with them. That was many years ago. So that's just some of the challenge, you know, again, like I said, is that, you know, where do you, if, if you do put a limit, where do you draw the line?
Again, we can follow up with the, the garbage bags. We're continuing to, you know, monitor it and see if there are any violations. So, and I had told Ms. Crew on, we would, we would do that right now, that we would just monitor and call us if they see a violation. I think we've corrected some of the complaints on there and we can, we would continue to do so.
And again, another challenge that we have is that, you know, for example, a lot of cities, you look at ordinance, a lot of cities have placed a limit on four animals. Well, you know, if, if you've been involved with our SPCA, that there's many times, many months that they come out there and say, we need fosters. Okay, well, if somebody who already has four animals, they can't foster if they wanted to. And so, you know, if we would go do an ordinance and restrict it, I think you'd have to put in some kinda arrangement to where it's, you know, it could be that you, you restrict them to a certain number and, but then they could foster another set of animals. But again, you start talking about you're creeping the number up. And, you know, we, you know, our, our, our kennels, I mean, not our kennels, but our animal control facility we're fixing to go build, is gonna have the capability of housing a hundred and what, fifty animals? So, yeah, and then you got the SPCA that's gonna still be operating, that's going to be housing animals also. And, all right, it's just, there's no easy, there's no easy answer. And, and I understand their situation. I, and I understand the frustration. It's, it's just, again, where do we, where can we draw the line? And can we continue to manage it with, with just the nuisance component? Or do we need to put a limit, a hard limit?
If we do put a limit, though, my concern is, I mean, how are, how would you even enforce that with?
Right.
I mean, if she shuts the door on your face and tells you to go kick rocks, are you gonna get a warrant to go in there and count animals? To write a city ordinance violation?
We have gotten warrants, but it usually doesn't come to that. I mean.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's how we, what we would have to do.
Right.
Do we really wanna do that?
And even long-term, making a complaint about noise, we can see how many animals are there. There's, there's ways to handle that.
But for an example, if you, if you go over there and you do put a hard number on there and you, and you do, you write them a ticket, it's gonna go to the judge. And the judge is gonna make a determination of, is, if they're one over, is he, is he going to give them some flexibility or not? I don't know what there, what there is at that point.
Well, and that's one thing from the enforcement side, we wish we had that, some kind of, granted, you don't get a complaint, you don't ever get a citation or summons for, for an issue, nuisance issue regarding animals. Well, you don't have a limit. But if you, if you get a summons or citation and you're found guilty of that, then maybe as part of that, just as a suggestion, then maybe if the number of animals is issued, then we may have the authority then with registration to limit the number of animals. And cause any trouble, you can have as many as you want.
And I think that's the, the big variable here is, I said, I live next door to a lady who, and we have got zero lot lines, who fosters constantly the dogs. And sometimes I hear them and sometimes I don't, but she generally takes very good care of them, controls them. It's never been an issue in our neighborhood. And that's the problem is, is it one dog? The animals aren't the problem, it's the level of ownership. I'm always going to come down on the side of do what you wanna do on your own property, as long as it doesn't infringe on somebody else. I would like to see if you're unable to sleep at night due to noise complaints, call the PD. Let them, let them intervene and handle it and see if our nuisance, the, the laws that we currently have can address the issues.
He has recently put up cameras for hoping that will help him possibly.
Yeah.
So that we have twenty-four hour surveillance going on.
And have you talked to your neighbor?
There's no talking to her, okay? She's pressing charges on me for mowing her side of my.
Okay, it's not an aim of cool.
So I don't go in the front yard. I've never been in trouble, I'm not gonna start.
Right.
This lady's got an ankle monitor, she's been in assistance and she's a teenager. So she's there behind these rescue dogs, large dogs. Anyways, that's where we're at.
The cameras will be very helpful for the judge because he's the one that ultimately will be in a position if they issue a summons to court, which we've already taken enforcement action and issued citations to appear in court for nuisance.
And so what I'm asking y'all in the position of having to enforce it is, do you feel like that you currently have the tools to address this as needed?
We can address our part of it. I can't adjudicate it, but I can certainly, when the animal control officers get there, and we've had these discussions specifically about this situation. Are they barking too much or not? We can't really decide that because I don't live right next door to them. I don't have the same hours they do. And yes, I believe that's a lot of animals. I wouldn't really want to, but at one point, you know, we kinda take ourselves out of it. The reasonable standard will be established by them to the judge.
Which is where the cameras would be helpful.
And the cameras will be very helpful for the judge to make that decision. And then if she's issued the citation and is found guilty and has to pay a fine, there becomes the, the resolution. Soon or later, she'll get tired of paying that fine.
So you don't have any one animal or fifteen animal, we really have no bearing on how the animal is, behaves. So you could have, or a limit on the number of animals you could have and just still have one dog and be the same situation that you are here today. So.
You really can't.
So I think what we, what I'm hearing is that we have a good set of enforcement tools that we can use as soon as we get some evidence that, like the camera system that you said, or having called PD at middle of the night, you know, the, maybe two o'clock in the morning and they're barking.
I'm seventy-five years old and I am afraid to call the police and see what then she's gonna determine how to do to me. But she said she has an ankle, ankle, had an ankle case.
That's why I sent she moved here in March because they didn't want to push the issue anymore. So I decided that it was my time to come and request someone from someone at least here as if it does no good. It does no good, but I've done my due diligence for my family.
Okay, does anybody ever, anybody else have any other questions? What we can do is, again, all we had on the agenda was to discuss.
Absolutely.
Okay, and so we've, we've, you've had, we've had the discussion and council will have the opportunity if they wanna bring it back and take further action. Okay?
And so I'm clear, I'm looking, I've been looking at your, your house from Google Street. Cause something you said about the, the garage being next to, I think you said the bedroom and it, yeah. Yeah, it is, it's very close.
Dogs live in cages in the garage.
In the, so, and that house is blue? So that, as I'm looking at it, okay, yeah, it's, I mean, it's certainly your end of the house ends up on that, on that same side. Pretty close.
I'm afraid to go on that side of the house now because when I go to get the hose to drain out front to water my flowers, there'd be dogs out there trying to get over the fence and snarling at me and veering teeth and barking. And, and I'd be shaken so bad just trying to get my hose to the front to water my flowers. But my issue is her or the dogs, cause I knew she's already in there, there was no ordinance, it's getting a future ordinance. So supposedly the owners are gonna evict her that she broke the lease or something. I don't know what that has to do with it, but for the next people that come in, that they can't come in with a whole school of dogs too. She calls it her rescue dogs and she calls it her family, cause I said, so that means you're finding homes for them. She said, oh, no, this is my, my family.
Is, is, is the animals behind a chain link fence or a wooden fence?
I have chain link fence there and then I put up a wooden fence and I didn't take down my chain link fence. When I put up the wooden one, I had them put close together just because in the past, dogs that were over there chewed up the whole back of that house. Took, it was the cedar shakes, they took everything off. So I didn't want them chewing up my fence, my new wood fence. So I've got my, my chain link fence up there right next to my wood fence.
Okay, okay.
The figure right now living in cages in the garage and she told me that herself. And then when somebody gets over there all the time, I don't know if it's a daughter or what, told me that they're gonna be leaving soon. I don't know if that's true either, but I've seen no attempt at, at catching anything up, so.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing it to us. And like I said, all we could do is discuss it today. And if any member of council wants to bring it back for further action, action, we can.
Thank you. You would appreciate that, thank you very much.
All right. We'll move on to item two. And item two is to discuss and consider a request from DHK Development to allow for an additional thirty foot curb cut at the Orchard Creek Drive for a right in, right out commercial drive into the four point three plus acre commercial partial between the adjoining Kroger's Commercial Shopping Center and the Wood Shore Community Drive. Modesto, you want to?
Yes, Mayor Doug Kanapa with DHK approached us, I guess sometime in December of last year, asking if the city would consider a curb. And at that time, it was also discussed a median cut on Orchard Creek Drive on a out parcel next to, I wanna say in between, Discount Tire and Wood Shore, the entrance to Wood Shore. Just to give you a little bit of history, so when this development came in, there was a traffic impact analysis and council and planners both met on it, lengthy discussion. And what was eventually decided that there would be, we would allow three driveways on Dixie Drive and then two driveways on Orchard Creek Drive and a traffic light, and the traffic, and the traffic light. And I think probably the thought process was that as this all developed, most of the traffic would move in internally and then try to direct it towards the traffic light at Sandal, at Sandalwood. But as things worked out, this property, you know, developed and this, this out parcel separated from the, the Kroger development. And so now I think there's no, there's not a cross access agreement that didn't get secured during the time of sale. I think the, the owner is still trying to work on that, but it's not been favorable. So they've made a request for a curb cut or a driveway out on the property only. And that's really come from when it met with me and the city engineer. We had reservations on the median cut because we were seeing the median cut was, you know, very close to the turn lane coming to the light. So we were worried that that was going to create havoc on the turn. And so DHK has come back with a right in and right out only. That is no panacea either. And, and the planning commission picked up on that. Their worry is that there still could be a lot of U-turn traffic and, you know, here coming, coming out. So I, I really couldn't tell you what's the, the best option. I think DHK would probably be open to either one. But again, the original concept plan was try to move the traffic internally and, and go to the light. And so I've warned Mr. Kanapa, he, he did get a warm reception at planning commission. I said he may get a lukewarm here, so I turned him over to the, to the wolves.
Mr. Kanapa, you wanna address, and just real quick, is that whenever, Desso talked to me about this a little bit before we went to planners was, his question was, should we bring it directly to council first or to planners or? And the reason why I suggested we go back to planners is because planners were the ones that were involved with the plotting and with the plots and the layout and the original agreement of how many cuts were going to be. So I didn't want it to come to council first and for us to make a decision that may have overridden what they had agreed upon years ago. So that's why we took it to planners first to get their feedback.
I understand. Well, okay, well, first of all, mayor, council, staff, thank you for taking time to put me on the agenda tonight. And before I begin, I'd like to introduce three folks that are here. On my behalf, Calvin Shiflett is mayor of Clute. Calvin's back there, CJ Snipes is the city manager of Clute, and Bobby Dean is my civil engineer who does all my, all my civil design work. My company is DHK Development. We have developed Wood Shore, all the residential sections in Wood Shore. We did not develop the Wood Shore Marketplace, which is the Kroger Center and the Discount Tire and the Strip Center in between. That land, as, as Mr. Munda was, was really explaining, that land was sold to Senkor Development and they then did the development for Kroger and the others. So, so, I mean, he, he, city manager addressed it very well. I mean, that's the situation that we're in right now. And so I'm coming to you, asking you to consider, you know, and at this time, I am saying the driveway. And, and as the city manager said earlier in December, when we came, we talked about the Esplanade cut and that just seemed to have all kinds of issues attached to it that I didn't, I don't know if they were solvable or not. So here I am with the request for the curb cut. I can tell you that the, the tract, the four point three acre tract, which is in red, it is, it is bordered by two, well, it's bordered by the residential areas of Wood Shore on the south and also on the east. You see that brownish color there to the east of the red line? Those are actually, oh, sorry. High tech for me here. Okay, so this area here, these are actually three lots that are platted and home construction will begin on those soon. That, that's all part of section one. And in fact, that was, that was platted and, and pretty much under development by the time Senkor decided not to go ahead on the purchase of, of this property. This four acre tract was originally part of the entire commercial development. And so my understanding is that the studies that were done anticipated that that four acres would be served with the rest of the development, with the, with the other curb cuts and traffic signal. This tract was an option, okay? So they had an option, the buyer had an option. We really didn't get any indication that they weren't going to exercise the option until right at the end of their process. So frankly, I wasn't quick enough to figure out that I'd have a future issue. Had I been, I maybe could have resolved it, but I didn't. Had I been, I maybe could have resolved it, but I didn't, and so here I am right now. And I can certainly entertain any questions that you might have. I, I started to say, the four-acre tract, we anticipate there will probably end up being maybe three different users on that property. Everybody will be required to use the same access easement. It'll be an easement that, 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 that serves all of the users on this property. And maybe I'll leave it at that, and if you have any questions for me or the city of Clute, please, fire away.
Who did the, the traffic study for the original?
I believe it was E H R A. Does that, does that sound right?
So it's something the developer paid for, not, not the city?
Correct.
That's correct.
All right, so if the concern, you know, Modesto talked about some of the concerns, and that is, is that you're going to turn into a U-turn nightmare coming in and out and then trying to get back onto Dixie Drive or wherever. And so I guess my question, the reason why I was asking that question is, is that right now you've got the exit coming out of the center of that four, four-and-a-plus acres. And, you know, are you tied to that? You know, could you offset it and move it further east and get it away from that other traffic intersection? And before you even answer that question is, is that could we go back to the original traffic study or the original people that did it and say, what would you recommend, what would their recommendation be for this piece of property?
That, I, I mean, I guess the answer is yes to, to any of that. I, I, I hesitate to give you an answer right now on your first question regarding moving it to the east. And I'll tell you one reason, because we are, we are working with a, a user on this tract right here. And so what we've tried to do is try to balance that, that access easement so that it basically is between, so that it can serve both equally, is what we've tried to do. I, I certainly don't want to be in a position where we have the access easement serving these folks, and then somebody else comes down later on and says, well, could we get access? Because we wouldn't, you wouldn't allow that.
And then some of the other history for, for us on council is that the other, I think it goes back to the, the Bill Yenney era and stuff was, is that the concern was, is that we didn't want to, we, Bill always, and we always, we as a city, we've always taken care of the parkway that runs around, down Oyster Creek Drive. And so, but once it hits Dixie Drive here and goes further east, that parkway, first of all, is not in our city limits, correct?
No.
And so there is no park, there is no parkway like we have.
The right-of-way is.
The right-of-way, but there's no park, we have no defined parkway like we have on Oyster Creek Drive, is that correct?
Sal, is it?
It is not a dedicated parkway.
It's designated right-of.
Just right-of.
It is a right-of-way where the green area is.
And, and what we've done, mayor, is we, the developer, we've instituted a forty-foot setback. So there's a forty-foot green setback from the right-of-way line, forty feet to the back. You could, in fact.
Then you kind of see where your line goes.
You can see along here, right? So the intention is to continue the trail, that's a ten-foot wide trail, continue the trail all the way across, you know, I mean, to the limit of my property. Right, and that forty-foot width would continue on. And that's something that we maintain.
Yes.
So that forty-foot is going to be available at the car wash they're putting in right now?
Uh, the, the, right, the car wash, while they're, they're, they're buying, right, they're having to take title to that forty feet, but they're not allowed to develop anything within that forty feet other than an access drive. So, and within that forty feet, Sal, there's, there's the, the storm sewer, is I believe it's within that forty feet, right? Right, so, but meanwhile, there is landscaping that will be planted in there, and it'll be maintained by the car wash. Same way landscaping is maintained within the forty feet by any of the other users.
Yeah, I was just, you know, again, the reason why I asked if we could go back to the people that did the study and ask them if they could recommend the best solution for every, all the parties. Because again, we could all, what if just the death? And I don't know if we'd come up with a great solution. And, but again, the concern is, is that even for your residents over there that, that live in your property here, I think they would be concerned about, you know, right-in, right-out, well, then there're going to be U-turns over here, there's going to be U-turns over there, there's going to be U-turns over here, just to be able to head, again, back toward Dixie Drive, if that's where people are coming from, depending on what the type of business you have. Hopefully, I mean, I hate to see Lake Jackson go and buy in Clute, but I know they are going to, so.
Well, I, I was going to suggest putting up a bunch of no-U-turn signs.
Mayor, I, I do.
And then have a policeman sitting out there writing tickets.
I do have, I do have a question for the city manager of Clute.
Oh, C J.
You like the way he put you on spot.
If you could call him to the podium.
Mayor Council, thank y'all for entertaining us.
Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Doctor, doctor.
The, the code, the fire code, have you guys talked about the code? Would there be a requirement for a second?
We have talked about the.
To the other property?
Yes, and that's actually one of the variables we're using to attempt to force the cross-access agreement between the two parties.
Okay.
But that may end up.
The fire code may require you to have a second access.
We believe it does, they're probably going to end up in a situation though where there may be Sherri's type folks involved, so. I don't want to say too, too much.
At least you didn't say me.
We love you though, Sherri.
So even if you, so what I'm hearing is if you did have cross-access, you would still have to find another, it's not like you had to find another in-and-out on that property.
Well, I, I think there's already a natural encroachment here. There, this pavement actually crosses the property line and submits itself to a lane at this point. And again, I have to be measured when I say we have a hate strip situation, and we're trying to relieve both parties of the hate strip through the use of the fire lane.
Well, mayor, I think, you know, what, you know, what it shows is that offering just one driveway, probably still restricted by fire code. Now, having the, if you have access to the rest of the property, it opens up to multitudes of access. There's several driveways, because really what you don't want is if Oyster Creek Drive is blocked and that's the only access, the fire truck can't get to it. If they have access now to the Kroger site, then a fire truck can have access via Dixie and/or OCD.
And I will say that council this weekend, when we were discussing our budget, talked about sweeping the, the other party as well, so.
My biggest concern, you know, I would love to help city of Clute out and, you know, get them out of this predicament, but U-turns is going to be a big, big problem because I see this same issue, not U-turn issue, but certain issues where we put signs saying no left turns in downtown especially, and people just ignore that. So when they come out of this intersection, even if you put no U-turn on the next, it's going to be disregarded, and we're going to be fighting that traffic issue for a long, long, long time. And I would suggest if we're going to even think about doing this, that we send it to the traffic commission and let them evaluate and see.
Yeah, I don't liaise with that board anymore, but I did for a while, and we just changed something at that, sorry.
Sandalwood, was that?
This guy right here, we just changed something, I don't say was major, but it took quite an effort from the traffic commission and this, and this body, and we had, we brought in our consultant on that one, I believe, right?
Yeah, the left turn was, was facing the wrong way, the, the lane.
I forget exactly what we changed, but yes, I mean, this is already sort of a hot button for problems.
So is there, there's currently no access to that four-point-three acres?
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman Wallace, what we ended up doing there is we put signage on the light. Now, look, it gave you the upside down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We put signage on the light stating that there's no U-turns, and we also put signage here stating that.
No entrance.
You know, there's, there's no, no U-turns.
Right.
In an attempt, residents here were stating that there was a lot of U-turning going on and creating traffic problems.
And coming in the wrong lane.
They'd either go into, on Zinnia and go into the neighborhood and do it, or they would try to do it here. I drive a big Dodge, I can't make that turn. There's a lot of us out there that drive the big trucks, they can't make that turn, so they have to make it back up, and then, and so it was causing traffic issues, so.
Yeah, it's been very difficult educating the city of Clute residents how to get into.
So, and, and so that I'm a hundred percent clear here, you're talking about unprotected, no light, access.
That's right.
And it just right-in, right-out. They're, they're, they're asking for no median cut. What, what I'm saying is if we have the traffic study people come back in, they look at the situation, look at traffic flow, they may come back and say the right thing to do is do a cut across the median, shift it to the right, and even, maybe even put a light there.
That'd be a pretty expensive proposition.
I know, but, but then it's, we would have an expert, people that, that's their job is to, to look at the situation and come back.
But I'd, you know, rather have the light over the other, other intersection.
Well, they would make their recommendation.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And there is no light here?
No.
There is no light.
Just here, okay.
You're probably not going to like my question or suggestion, but if those three lots that you have are yours to develop, right?
They are developed.
They're already sold?
They're already sold, there's houses going on them?
That's three?
The houses will, will sell soon.
Three, we only go there.
Because you could use your property to make you a driveway going that way, right?
Right.
Well, I, I could accept my wife would be a widow before long because we, we did, look, in all, in all honesty, a couple of, in all honesty, a couple of years ago, we had a, a, a retail developer who wanted to buy the entire four acres. And, and he really wanted to get access to Woodshore Crossing, which is that main north-south street. So what I did, I, you know, if you know people that live in Woodshore, I mean, I'm upfront with folks, so at an annual HOA meeting, I floated the idea, and, you know, people, people were diplomatic, but they were diplomatic with their pitchforks, right? So people just didn't want that direct access coming into the community like that. So I, I quickly abandoned that.
Mr. Canopka, is, is there, is it three lights or is there four lots there?
Three lots.
There's only.
There's, there's three lots.
There's three planted lots.
Yeah, there's, there's three lots, one, two, three, and then there's the additional forty-foot reserve. Right.
My other concern is, did we not have Chicken Express ask for the same thing? And we denied it, right? They wanted to come out onto Oyster Creek Drive.
They, um.
We didn't allow that.
The shopping center or Chicken Express probably talked to us early on and we kind of, because it's parkway. Sal's right, or the mayor had mentioned, yes, the parkway between Dixie and Oak Drive is kind of considered sacred sink. So we're very judicious on lots, so yes, if they had made a formal request, it got denied. But I, I can't remember if it was, I can't remember if it was informal or if they were just kicking the tires.
That started at the very start of the P U D discussion with H E B. And at that point in time, they denied any more access than what they were provided for.
So that's my only, I mean, I, I hear you guys, but I'm going to fight for our people. If we didn't allow it for our own businesses, you know what I'm saying? You're coming to us asking it for your business, I just, I think we need to consider that.
Mr. Canopka, how far, I mean, I'm just trying to eyeball it here. That forty-foot east is right there, is pretty much right there along the, the curb of the cement, it just extends over?
Yeah, yes, I, I'd say pretty much from here all the way across.
And it looks too tight to get a driveway into there, onto Woodshore.
Yeah, we would do close to the intersection.
It would be really close.
There'd be no way you can make a left there.
Yeah, I mean, a driveway's thirty feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, you know, going to be a ten-foot trail.
So right here, Zinnia, 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 is that?
No, no, that's, that's Zinnia.
Sandalwood.
Zinnia is the next one.
So this is.
That's Zinnia right there.
Okay, and right here is the center media, go all the way across?
Yes.
Yeah, it's got some cuts, but yes, there's a median there.
Left turn lanes, mostly, two left turn lanes.
And this, this is their main entrance that come out of?
To Woodshore.
It's single in, wide, wide up to the two, right only, I believe it's, no, it's right and left, right? Yeah, it's right and left. But don't, no light, so full open intersection with no light.
I would say that I would have to agree with the mayor on, and Mr. Blanchard also. This is an afterthought. It's a lack of, you know, this isn't, everything else has been developed, the roads are already there. I would not personally be comfortable agreeing to any kind of cuts or anything without having a traffic study done there with it. What a reasonable, if there is a reasonable, um, solution to this. But I mean, us sitting here and second guessing, well, they're going to turn here and who's going to turn here? I don't think that's the smart thing to do. I, I think there, we need to hear from somebody who does this for a living.
Understood. And did I hear you say that this track was never formally part of this other track? No, this track was part of this track. It was, and it was, it was an option, right? So in a sense, there was track A and track B. Well, I guess maybe that's my question, if it was all track A and this was carved out, is there no way for it to sort of benefit from, you know, it's like land title sort of things? Yes. But if it never was? When they, when they dropped the option, we, we didn't reserve the ability to have the, the cross-access.
Was there any, had Kroger done any drawings or anything on here that showed a cross-access? I mean, was the cross-access potentially thought of being in the back or in the front?
Well, they, you know, I guess at the time, look, I, I'm sure that if they had closed on everything, including the four acres, they probably would have reserved a driveway across the front, but it's what they, is what they most likely would have done.
I, I think I kind of agree with the study because when I was working here on a motorcycle, that's, I'm teen years ago, traffic was building back up, going back to the college, and it was coming back around here back then. So if we put more rooftops, it's going to, traffic is just steady build back up there. So we might look into having a, a traffic study to see.
I, I think, if I can, if I can say this right, I think the issue isn't increased traffic or increased retail. I think because, because that was part of the original study, right? So the same amount of retail had been anticipated. The issue is access, access to that property is, is what I think, is what I think the issue is.
Yeah, plus, you know, you, there's a, there are train tracks further down, and during the train times, the traffic backs up all the way up to Sandalwood.
Right.
On this side, so.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And that's going to prohibit getting people out of the neighborhood, you know, if you, if you ask right-in, right-out, you know? So it's, it's going to really cause very much congestion. And anytime, you know, natural tendency is to go the easy way out, and people are going to, somebody's going to get hurt down there trying to make that U-turn. And I'm very concerned about the safety.
Yeah, and, and that's why I'd suggest no U-turn signs. But anyway, I, I think what I'm hearing, and unless any of you have anything to say.
I would like to say that the city of Clute is going to make certain that fire trucks handle to that type, that type of work. To do, to get access into that park. If the beings that we have to take them on, as we just said, or, that will be a.
Make their recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, the access to OCD is, is good, but like you say, Mr. Mayor, the, down here, the additional access to Dixie is a totally.
Well, I mean, everybody knows that a fire truck needs a, needs a in-out.
Right.
Not an in, turn around and go out.
Correct.
To all means, you know, at some point, at some point, there will be a cross-access.
Yeah.
Okay, Modesto, you want to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Canopka, it sounds like the, you know, the council is heading towards asking to involve the engineer who did the traffic analysis. My suggestion to the council would be that the question should be raised to the, the traffic engineer, what's the best access to the property via either OCD and/or the Kroger site? That they look at both equally and, and, and give everybody advice. Because they may say the best option is not to even have a curb cut. It should be, you know, on the site, or they may say, no, the, you need both. But it would, I, I wouldn't want to just look at, at Oyster Creek Drive in a vacuum.
Right. Okay, Modesto.
I just wanted to share a little bit of history, going back a little bit as to, as it regards to the traffic study, and also as it regards to cross-access agreement. The last plot that we had sight on, actually, and still is on our record, shows a cross-access agreement right there. Then also regarding to the traffic study, when this thing came back to us in December, we, during a discussion from the engineer, engineering point of view, that I personally was very adamant about no medium cut. And because I went back and I looked at the traffic study in great detail, and found out that the current configuration that they have here is, was the best, but it was not the real best, meaning that. Meaning that there are a lot of issues, it didn't score high and not too risky, you know, accident, right? That this current condition is, you know, is subject for a lot of excessive stacking, right? And, and with that said, projecting forward to any other, putting another stoplight or whatever, is you're really shortening the run that is not there right now, right? So I just want to bear that in mind. And we had recommend that before the entertaining given a medium cut, that they needed to go back and, and get a study done. But at the same time, I also gave my, my, not to expect anything different from what, you know, we were saying, right? So I just wanted to throw that out there regarding to this study.
Thank you.
So I think where we're at is, is the request is for you guys to go back and do a traffic study and come back and, and give us what the engineers recommend. So we can at least look at that and then, then we can make a decision.
Okay. Thank you all for your time and for the discussion. Do, same engineer or, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter to me, but.
It's up, I don't know what difference.
Or think about it and we can figure it out tomorrow.
The most expensive one you can find.
I'd rather spend the money on a expedite cut, or an access agreement.
The original traffic study was done by the traffic engineer that was agreed upon.
Yes, it was on your approved list at the time.
Okay.
Sal, did you have, I mean, I mean, do you have a, do you, I mean, do you, would you prefer that they go to the original or?
No, go with the original, EHR, they, they have a lot of the work done.
Right.
So I think they will be the more.
Probably speed up the process.
Yes.
It'd probably make it cheaper since they've already done a lot of work on it, hopefully.
All right, those engineers, they found a way to raise prices all the time. All right. Again, thanks for coming to us.
Thank you.
All right.
Good luck.
Okay, move on to item three. And this is to discuss and consider streaming of city council meeting equipment and guidelines. And to me, there's two components of this, and the biggest component is get, for us to listen to, understand what the streaming capabilities are gonna be made available to us. And, and then understand, understand the streaming side of it and then, and the costs associated with it and the different options that we have and any kind of cost that would be tied to that, as best as we know tonight. And then the next component of it is, again, the streaming gets, gets us to the original request of is being, having the ability to livestream current council meetings and have that streaming, that video available for future reference. And this will be an upgrade, what we're talking about here. And the other component of it's going to be is, on the guidelines is, one thing that could add cost to that is depends on, on our guidelines going forward with video conferencing for our meetings, because that's another element of cost that we would have to discuss if that's something that we wanted, we would want to change from the original standard, the way we did things prior to COVID, then the pandemic. And so first I want to talk about and put in, discuss the streaming side of it.
Sally is getting ready to order equipment from Swaggin that council approved on the budget amendment. And that first step is putting cameras in. My understanding is, and we really need to find out from council if this is what you want. There would be two cameras in the back that are trained on the dais. And then they can, the operator can switch on to maybe who is speaking. And then a new camera then will be behind us, trained at the podium, and so they can pick up there. Then there is a fourth feed which would, it picks up the, the feed on the projector. So at any one time while you're streaming, you, you're only seeing one picture, but if the operator, Swaggin operating it, can pick which one. So they have to, you know, they're listening on the meeting and knowing, you know, do I need to train it on the podium? Do I need to train it on council, asking the question? Or do I need to pick up the presentation, the presentation? So it moves back and forth, but there's, there's, yeah, right. But there's, there's four things that we can do. And so that's how it's being proposed and accepted by staff. But before we place that order, we want to confirm, we want to confirm if you're okay with that.
So you're, so you're talking, what you're talking about is on page sixty of our packet?
I will defer to Sally since she's been working on the proposal. Sally, is that correct?
That is one of the placements, there's three options. And of course, we can put them wherever, but the two, Bradley came up with these, placing two cameras there and then one behind the dais.
Right.
So is, are three cameras what is included in the initial basic pack?
For them to do it for us, yes.
Okay, and the ability, if you're using just these three cameras, the ability to, like if he's talking to where it trains in on him, is that included in the basic package or is that an additional?
That's included in.
That is included, okay.
There are three pan tilt and zoom cameras.
Hello? Yeah, there's three pan tilt and zoom cameras. So they will be able to zoom in, these two cameras will zoom in on whomever's speaking up here. And they can zoom out, the one back here would zoom in on Megan speaking or the podium.
And so the service we provide is the payment for each meeting is to, one, handle the meeting remote, remotely. And then also then get it on to social media once the meeting's recorded, and also just stream it at that time. And then, then archive it or index it to the, to the agenda following up. And that's what we're paying for the service. So there's a monthly service to handle the meetings, but then there's the equipment purchase. But before, you know, we're at the point now that we need to order the equipment to start getting it ready for October.
So the biggest question that are feedback that I have received from us livestreaming the meetings is that they have a difficult time. They can always hear whoever's talking at the podium really well, they don't hear us as well. So is improved sound quality like part of this, is that just?
We've gone, we've looked into that and this is what it's gonna take, is, is mine even on? It's really just speaking up to the mic.
Yeah, the, the biggest change probably why, it's kind of a habit, and I'm probably the worst one, is talking into the mic, probably long-term.
But I just heard you, like when you got a little bit closer, it's a little bit louder.
We'll probably get longer stalks, but it's not the microphone itself, it's how far, it's how close we are to the mic.
It's just like this one, you can't really hear me, but now you can.
Okay.
You could, you could approve that, I mean, you can approve that by switching the type of mics. But once you start doing that, is you start picking up if you're sitting here rattling candy, you're gonna pick up your rattling candy. Or clicking the pin and stuff, so there's trade offs and stuff. The only thing I was gonna say is that, you know, when we went down this road and, you know, the request was is, let's do the best we can, but then also keep it as simple as possible. And we tried to do that on our own and now we're going with a third-party company to help us with it, which again, I think the biggest benefit that I see from going with third-party company is, is the indexing of the video. Because it'll make it very easy for anybody that just wants to go and listen to this to a specific part of the meeting. They just go look on Agenda, click on it, and it'll take them to that part of the video. Huge change, huge improvement. Looking at different video livestreamings that other, you know, governing bodies that do around here is I was watching, even the county commissioners court, and they just do a camera in the back and they use Swaggin also. They don't do, they don't, as far as I could tell from all the ones that I watched, I think I watched three different scans through their, three different meetings. And they never changed camera angle or anything like that. And, and then, you know, at the very beginning, we talked about, you know, did we want to have a camera on people coming to the podium? And there's pluses and minuses to that. The plus is, is that, you know, you get to see who's talking. But the minus is, to that is, is that a lot of people are scared whenever they come to council and speak to us anyway. And then the next thing you know is you're putting a camera on them and everybody that wants to could see who they are, type stuff. So, you know, there's trade offs on all that. And I'm not saying anyway is right or wrong, it's just that's kind of what the thought process has been in the past on, on cameras and stuff like that. I do like, I think it's helpful whenever you can, you know, especially if you have, like me, I'm talking for a long time, is, is that, that you do zoom up on somebody since they're talking for a long period of time. But I don't, what, what you don't want to do is just have them switching, jumping around anymore, having a conversation. So that's, that's where the, the back, back look helps out on that too, so. But that's just some of the stuff that, that I know on it. And the other question is, is that, the other reason why I'm looking for simplicity is, is that there may be a day down the road where we can't afford Swaggin. But we'll have the equipment, we'll own the equipment, and then we'll have to operate it ourselves in some shape or form. So I don't want to go buy some equipment that if that happens is that we can't operate it because it's too complex.
Makes sense. So I think, you know, really the question we have right now is, it's probably everybody could agree to the two cameras in the back and then the feed to the presentation. It's, do we want to have a camera trained on the podium?
I say yes.
If it's not extra cost, I'd say yes, we can always turn it off. If it's, if it really becomes, you know, if we get a lot of feedback from people that say, you know, I would come, but I don't want, you know, I don't have to, I don't have somebody have to, what was it, George, what it comes in, shorts all the time, had to put in slacks, I feel like had to put slacks on. From K G, keep like.
Oh, Glenn.
Glenn.
So, yeah, so it's not a different camera, I guess. The, the, I, if we're doing just like the, the buy no buy question, then I just, if, if you're telling me that all three of these triangles are the same camera.
Yes, they're all the same type of camera.
We can move it around however we want to.
Yeah, you can move it around later if we need to.
So, but it would be an additional cost to train onto the screen?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna do a live, they're gonna, they're gonna digitally feed that into the screen. The challenge that we always, we will always have, we will all need to remember is, is that by doing that, the audience won't see that.
Correct.
You, we will have to say, you know, something or whatever.
Yeah, they won't see your red laser.
They won't see the red laser, because they'll be seeing a digital version.
They'll be seeing exactly what's on that thing, so it's gonna be a lot clearer than a picture of it.
Yeah, we just, we'll just have to remember to say, you know, whatever, or maybe you, maybe you could use a mouse, so that is a possibility.
They could pass control to us individually.
Okay, so we'll go with the three cameras, is probably what is seen either on page sixty or fifty-nine. The next question really is, it's a procedural question as well that we need to resolve with council. You know, during the pandemic, we started to try to accommodate council who was possibly sick or something and streamed them into the meeting. Staff talked it today and our understanding was a little bit different and confused earlier with Swaggin. And what we can do is, and Sherry will pipe in if I'm gonna say something incorrect.
Oh, definitely.
Is that when someone from the body is streaming in, can't attend, the room, everybody in the room has to see them. The public watching the stream doesn't have to.
That's right.
But everybody in the room has to. So that probably, that was like, okay, if we do stream someone right now, what we have is kind of rudimentary. We put a screen where you are and we show your face and the public can see, but I don't know if any other council member can see. So if we were going to do that, we were probably suggesting that we'd probably put a TV screen in the back corner or something or in the middle, where everybody in the room can see, can see them versus a screen here that the rest of you can't see.
There's nowhere to put on that screen?
We did, but it's a picture, it's kind of a picture and picture and it's very small. Cause we, we thought about doing that and it's like, it winds up being really small on the screen. We thought we, oh, we could do something really big, but we can't, and on the, on the feed. So we still are with this screen inside the room.
During, during the pandemic, when the governor did his executive order and just, they gave a lot of flexibility on how you could zoom and stuff like that. And so that, you know, you didn't even have to have a quorum in the room, you just had to have a quorum involved. So things, things evolved. But whenever, in September of twenty twenty-one is whenever he removed that flexibility, we went back to the standard open meetings laws. And what Modesto's talking about is for, if somebody video conferences in, which video conferencing and tele, calling in on a phone has always been available, but the requirements are more stringent. And when it comes to under, operating under the standard ordinance or law statute, is you have to, the size of the display of the individual that's conferencing in has to be large enough where anybody that's in the public viewing area can observe their expressions, their, you know, see if they're awake or whatever type stuff. And so, you know, having the monitor, the twenty-three inch monitor really doesn't cut that. It's gonna have to be something a little bit larger to be able to allow that. And.
And is that something we have available or is that an additional cost?
No, we, we would, that would be additional cost, but we would.
Stream TV in the background back there?
We talked about that.
Yeah, and we would put that under, the peg funds, we believe, could cover, you know, cover, cover that. And so, you know, and getting the monitor is probably not, you know, is not a hurdle. But again, what, you know, what we need from a guideline is, we're operating, I've asked staff to continue to operate as, you know, the COVID guidelines, that if a council member asks to be streamed, you know, we will try to accommodate that. We've not offered that to the planning commission. It's only been, you know, asked, you know, by council. And so that's what, that's the guideline we're operating under informally until council, you know, tells us, you know, otherwise.
And I had talked with other governing bodies in, in the area. I've talked to the judge at county, I talked to all the cities, I talked to Clute, I talked to Freeport, I have not talked to Richwood. I didn't get in touch with Steve Boykin about it. And I've talked to Angleton and they've all, have, all their councils have gone back to a hundred percent in-person council meetings. Even with Angleton, the mayor of Angleton works shift also. And he had requested if they could do, allow him to video conference in. And even his legal counsel said that they wouldn't, he wouldn't recommend it for, especially for the mayor to video conference in. And so they've all, everybody's converted back to the old, old system, I mean, the original system. And that is, is that all meetings were gonna be held in face-to-face and, I mean, and even when we operated face-to-face, there was times whenever if we knew that somebody was not gonna be available and there was an agenda item that they were, definitely is very strong about, we've tried to work around it and we have changed meeting dates in the past, if it was necessary, but rarely do we have to do that. So that's, you know, that's where we're at.
We keep talking about COVID guidelines, but that's not a COVID guideline. It's Texas Occupation Code, five-five-one-point-one-two-seven specifically says that a member or employee of a government body may participate remotely in a meeting of the government body by means of video conference if the video and audio feed of the member participation it talks about is broadcast to them live at the meeting. A member of a government body who participates in a meeting as provided by that subsection shall be counted as present. It goes on to say that you just cannot use the video feed person to create a quorum.
Right.
There has to be a quorum here. Why would we take that option away from any of us?
Well, again.
Ron has used it, I know JB's asked about it, I need to use it, I wouldn't take that away from any of us.
Well, shouldn't this be charter, charter, in the charter agreement of the city, the quorum and the presence? And maybe whenever the charter commission meets next time, they ought to look at that.
No, we need, we need to define that as a council, what our operating policies, how we want to run our council meetings. Is if we want to, and on how we want to operate. It doesn't require charter amendment to do that.
I didn't know if that was part of the charter.
No, no, and again, to go back, what Chase was saying is, is that the capability is to be able to, video conference in has been there. It was in the original statute, and so we've reverted back to the original statute. And all I'm saying is, is that, that to video conference in, to meet, the, the, the more stringent standard statute is a little bit more complicated, more complex. An example being, for example, is, is if you read further down into the statute, as it talks about in section E, is, is that if a member does. as it talks about in section E, is is that if a member does video conference in and has intention to participate in the whole meeting and we lose the feed, we have to recess the meeting. And if the feed is not corrected or or reestablished within six, six hours, we have to adjourn the meeting. So just again, that's an additional complexity that you, that the law puts in place. That keeps somebody from accidentally manipulating a meeting from the outside. That's why that, that's why the the statute is written that way. And so again, if 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 it's something that council wants to go forward with, then we just have to work within the guidelines and and make changes in the way we operate. We have to change the way the the agenda is written and and statements that are made. We have to know before the agenda goes out that someone is not going to be able to attend so that we can appropriately make the statements in the in the agenda. So those are just things that we would have to change if we would go forward. My assumption was is that whenever we we moved away from COVID is that we were going to go back to the standard face-to-face meetings. And so that's, that's, that's only, only place where I'm coming from on that, on that topic. So as a group, we need to decide if we want to have that capability and work that into our work process, then we can, we can do that. And the last thing I have to say is that through all my years of being a consultant, it's always easier to have good conversation and good debate and discussion if everybody's in the same room. Instead of having some people on in the room and some people video conferencing in.
So does the current version of the law not contemplate telephonic participation? Because there would be no way to have video or just say you get the audio then if you just.
Video conference call, that's actually the title of the law. They want to see the person and hear the person.
So I can't call in and participate? I could listen in, but I couldn't. I wouldn't be counted as present for purposes of.
No, you wouldn't.
Interesting.
And, you know, and when I was looking into this, you know, it's it's kind of interesting is, is that they have the requirement of, like I was talking about, is if you can't reestablish, you have to adjourn the meeting and so forth. Is, you know, it's like, well, what happens if I'm sitting and we have a quorum here and I get ill? Or somebody gets ill and says, I need to step out and leave the meeting? Well, it's that the 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 public sees it and they sees that you see that you've made a decision to leave the meeting. But when you drop the audio or drop the video piece of it, the the public doesn't see that you've made that decision. That either you, you made the decision to drop off or that something else occurred. So that's why they have the requirement of the six hour requirement. But again, it's something that we can work through and and so forth. There's also, you know, the flexibility of that if we go into a, if the state declares a disaster, then there's always the opportunity for the governor again to relax, relax it to allow us to be doing the full-blown things that we did during the pandemic.
How often have we utilized this?
Uh, we, the first time we used it was COVID. That's probably why I mistakenly said COVID. And we used it for Mayor Siple, the mayor's position. It is difficult for someone to stream in and guide the meeting. So the mayor's position is a difficult one to stream in, in in that.
And my understanding of regular law is that the mayor can not, the mayor has to be physically present to guide the meeting, correct?
I don't know. I'd.
Yes.
The person who's going to preside needs to be physically present.
Okay.
So if he was unable, he could zoom in, but Mayor Pro Tim would need to run the meeting.
Yeah, but then the the challenges you have is if I'm zooming in and I'm not filling the role as a mayor and facilitating that. Because right now, if I facilitate the meeting, this is getting into the woods, but but if I'm facilitating the meeting, I can't make a motion in a second. But if you're facilitating a meeting and I'm sitting out conferencing in, I would be allowed to make a second, first and second motion.
This really is.
That is in the woods. But I'm just saying, that's that's some of the complexity that goes into place with this capability.
Participation.
So I think we've used it, it's maybe three times, Mayor Siple, Ms. Seth, and then Councilman Blanchard. I think that's the only times that we've used it. I can't remember another one.
What's the code number?
It is five five one point one two seven.
Local government code or government code?
It's the big one. It's the big boy.
The big boy.
It works really well. I mean, it worked really well for me. And I mean, not, we we ran the whole world on Zoom for two years, so. And it's, obviously, we're capable of doing it, but it worked really well for me. I don't know how it was for you, Ms. Rhonda, but it seemed to be easy for me. I mean. It's not going to happen often, but we, we don't want to take that option away from us that may need it.
So my, my one thing that I would personally say about that is I think it's good to have that option. I do see what you're saying with it does create some additional complexity. Is this something that we anticipate needing to use frequently? Because, I mean, on our role in council, the mayor's role, I do think it's best as much as possible to be a face to whoever's taking their time to to be in front of us with whatever their concern is. So that's my question.
So how many people, how many councilmen could actually zoom in?
Two. Because you have to have, you have to maintain a quorum at the place where the public.
They don't. If more than three, more than two want to zoom for a meeting.
That's probably a situation that won't ever happen. But you'd, you'd move the whole meeting. If you couldn't get a quorum, you would move the whole meeting. You would change the date of the meeting. And again, we've done that in the past to be able to to work through this.
This is really interesting.
Again, the guideline that I've instructed staff with now is if a council member requests to be zoomed in, we will work our hardest to accommodate.
Yeah, so this says in A three that there can, a member participating in my video conference shall be considered absent for any portion during which audio or video communication is lost or disconnected.
But if you go further, it's, there's a conflict that says if you lose it.
It's section E.
Yeah, no, no.
Down than E. But if you lose it, then you have to stop the meeting and try to fix it. It's, it's a conflict in this.
No, sure. I, I, but I'm, I'm wondering too, in A three, like, does that, what about, what about muting audio? So if I, and it, because it says later, just in A three, government, governmental body may continue the meeting only if a quorum of the body remains present. So if if Chase and I are out and, well, how would that work? I'm saying if if both of the the audio people are muted, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be present. But I guess the physical quorum would still be.
Well, it depends. The only, the only issue that you run into is if the, if the transmission line is lost. If you can't, if you don't have the capability of audio and video, then you have to, have to recess the meeting until that's resolved. Now, if, the only time that has video conferencing in is is you have to have, your video has to be live the whole time, that you're in the meeting. We can mute your audio, but it has, but you have to have the ability to unmute to be able to speak and not have to have somebody unmute you. You have to be.
Well, maybe I got, maybe that would be, maybe that's my question. I, I, because it says lost or disconnected. If it's muted, is the audio channel lost?
No.
That's getting pretty attorney over there.
I can't hear anything that he's saying. If he's running his mouth and I, and I see and I see.
Well, that, that does happen and and but that's whenever you say.
So that's lo, I would say, ah, yeah, I mean.
No, that's saying you're muted. It's not lost. That means is that you have no control over it. And so.
Because then you know if it's lost or if he's just got it muted.
But if your lips are moving, then you're not.
Because that's just muted. But. Well, that's what I'm, maybe that's what I'm saying. Maybe I'm trying to highlight the difficulty associated with practical application about of of this technology with the the vagaries of the statute.
So again, it's, it's our decision on on how we want to go forward. And that's where I leave it with you guys, with with council on how we want to move forward on the guidelines so we can clear this up for staff and for the rest of us.
It looks like it's going well from my point of view, so I say we just keep going with what we're going with unless somebody has a huge hangup.
Any other comments?
Is it something we anticipate needing routinely?
I wouldn't say routinely. I mean, but I'm, I just don't want to take that option away. I mean, all of us aren't, no offense to anybody, but all of us aren't retired. I can't, you know, it may happen. I may have to be at work. I'm a single dad that works shift work. I, I would like to have that option at least so I could still be here and represent the people that put me in this seat. I don't, I don't want us to take that away from me. But no, I don't think it's going to be an often thing.
Yeah, I mean, my, my schedule's like yours. It's.
Right, it's, it can be crazy. So, I mean, we need that option. Don't take it away from us.
All right, any other comments? All right, so we'll leave that functionality there and now will this company that we're talking with or they're going to be able to help us with the logistics and the capability or is that something that staff?
No, that's something we'll work in because it's more of a zoom of bringing in the council member and putting it on a screen. I, I hesitate on an eighty-three inch screen. So.
I love that idea.
So we'll try to do a, a small.
If we do decide that, can we kind of put a limit on if we're going to have, how many times a council member going to be zoomed in? If it's going to be fifty percent of the time or forty percent of the time or they, they can just do it a number many times if they want to do it, the cost, cost of the way they doing things or things come up or.
We can do anything you want to do. I think, I think if if somebody abuses the 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 purpose and they're not, and if the community sees that only five members show up here.
Your abuse might be not my way of abuse or whatever, thinking. No, that's all I'm saying.
I think if you start abusing it, you're going to get voted out, right? I mean, the people aren't going to like it, so I'm obviously not going to abuse it. So I don't, you know what I mean? They're going to, the people are going to take care of that, I would think.
Well, nobody's not picking on you. You saying you, you keep saying you.
But I'm the only one that uses it. So, I mean, it seems like, I mean, who else uses it on a, a more than, more than one time?
JB did. He did it on the boat. You know, so.
Yeah, I, I did it when I, when I was on a cruise ship.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I think why, I think why.
I didn't do the picture deal. I did the, the voice, the phone.
Yeah, we just called you in the other day.
But that was when, but that was when.
No, I did, I did telephone deal.
But.
But you were gone and we didn't know that you were gone.
Now we lost you.
But again, I think whenever Rhonda and JB.
I got something more important.
Rhonda and JB used it, it was still whenever we were under the relaxed
I actually had.
Requirements that the governor provided at that time period. So now we're back to the standard requirements, which again are different, a little bit more stringent than the other one. But I don't, it hasn't been used in the past for, for a lot of reasons because we really never had, until we started going down the the realm of being able to stream, I don't think we ever even, anybody ever even thought about the video conferencing in. And so we all made an effort to, if at all possible, to make the, to be, to attend the meetings. And then if we weren't able to, we just weren't, we didn't attend.
And state law is already, we've had audio recordings. You, we audio record our meetings regardless and that's been in place for a very long time, correct? So anybody can do that. So my suggestion on this would be, because I do have concerns with the complexity of, okay, if we lose you, we have to stop a meeting. I don't want to stop a meeting and get involved in that. But I think let's move forward the way that it is and see how it works out. If we run into an issue with, you know, we're having to stop a meeting or do something like that, then we need to bring this back and look at it and say, listen, this is not a route we need to take. If it works and it's not something that's utilized frequency, frequently, just move forward.
And that's fair because, you know, if we start losing, it may be on our side, but it may be on the council member's side. It may be a council member who has a bad team.
But there's no, there's no gray area for, does it matter whose side it is?
But I like JB's, sorry, JB's suggestion that we ought to have some type of limit, you know, that what, what would be deemed as excessive.
Well, but we don't know that because it's basically new to us. So what I'm saying is.
It should be a big deal because.
I think if we go forward, well, if, if it does become accessible, no, well, and then somebody will raise the question is, this is, this is getting out of hand.
When we all made a commitment to the city and the citizens that when we ran for the election, to be able to serve the people. So, I mean, just to say, well, attending when it's convenient, it's not a good thing to me, you know.
And I agree with you and that's what I was saying. I think we need to all be present and be here. And I mean, like, I, I literally scheduled off two days a month to make sure that I'm here. I have the flexibility to do that. That's just my job. And that's a commitment I think that is important. So I agree with what you're saying. However, I don't think if somebody's saying, listen, you know, it's a job conflict. It's not like you're going on vacation and you want to zoom in. So I don't think that has to do with convenience so much as a necessity. And I think, I think the voters will let us know if they don't like it.
That's true. Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to pick on anybody. I'm just making a statement, you know.
Right, no, and I, I agree, I just, I think, I think there's a reasonable way forward with us and to see how it works out. And there's nothing that ever says that we can't bring it back and and readdress it if we don't like the way it's working.
Yeah.
What I do want to ask though is going forward is, is that, that if you, that, that we, that we do have a cutoff of the seventy-two hours. And if you find out that within the seventy-two hour, which an agenda is posted, is that the, that we will not, I'm asking is that we would, that we would not allow video conferencing in within that seventy-two hour period time. We should all be able to know almost ca, most cases of if it's, if we're going to be able to attend the next council meeting or not. Is that okay?
What does that change?
Yeah, what does that mean?
Yeah, what, what is knowing before the agenda?
There's specific wording that you.
There's specific wording that you have to put on the agenda if it's going to be video conference.
We can't put it on every agenda just in case?
Yes, you could probably do that.
Covers us right there, doesn't it?
And most likely if I'm not here, I might be sick and I mean, I have no seventy-two hours before that I'm going to be sick.
Well, that's just.
Yeah, how are you going to, how are you going to know?
But it.
You just put it on there and cover us and we're fine.
Like Modesto was saying is, is that to, to enable video conferencing, it does take some extra work from staff to be able to do it. And if, then if you, if we could provide them with lead time, then they could better be able to accommodate the the request.
I mean, if you know that before seventy-two hours, be glad, you know, it'd be nice to be able to provide that information. But, but, you know, I plan to use, if I have to do it because I'm sick and I'm definitely not going to know. But I want to be able to participate there, so I'm just.
Yeah, and I, I know my schedule, so when I see a conflict, if it comes up again, I'll absolutely, I'll call John, let y'all know for sure, so that's not an issue.
Okay. All right, you got enough direction, Modesto?
I do.
All right, move on to item four, ratify emergency repairs for the PD Dispatch Emergency Operations Center and Municipal Court Chiller Unit to digital air controls in the amount not to exceed a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Modesto.
So I need council to cover a check that I'm about to write since we ordered these repairs in May after the air conditioner broke. And I forgot to bring this back to council for the, for the repairs. This is a kind of a unforeseen circumstance where it broke and really only digital air controls can fix this air conditioning. They were the original installer and provider of the parts. So we approved this in May and they're on the ground now fixing it. And so I need, since it's a purchase over fifty thousand dollars, I need this to be ratified by council. And then on the next item, we have a budget amendment where this would come out of our capital projects fund.
Okay, so we have item four and so any questions on what Modesto just covered? On the emergency purchase repair? If not, I'll take a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to ratify emergency repairs for PD dispatch, emergency operations center and municipal court chiller unit to digital air controls in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item five is approved resolution number eight nine nine, amending the general project fund for repairs to the PD AC in an amount of eighty-five thousand dollars.
This is a resolution amending the capital budget for twenty-one twenty-two, increasing the general capital improvement fund for air conditioner replacement from sixty thousand to one hundred and forty-five thousand. The revised project shall be air conditioner replacement for one hundred and forty-five thousand. And this is to cover the project that we just mentioned.
Move for approval. We have a motion to approve from Sinhanya.
I'll second that.
A second from Blanchard. Any other questions on this resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Uh, item six. Approve change order, uh, change order one, an increase of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents for North Parking Place facade renovation for phase three of downtown revitalization project, Megan.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So as you see there, this change order is specifically, it's gonna be the only change order on this project. That's why it looks so large. It is because we had to modify the structural framing. When they started removing specifically above the Taekwondo, they realized that there were just unforeseen, there were things that they couldn't have accounted for in the bid, so in the bid spec. So the contingency for the overall downtown project was one point zero nine million dollars. As you saw at the last meeting, we're currently sitting at about seven hundred and twelve thousand remaining with that contingency fund. After tonight, if you approve this, it would take our contingency fund down to six hundred and seventy-two thousand approximately. Mind you, that is for the entire downtown project. We did allocate, so this original project contract for just the facade renovation was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. That did include a fifteen thousand dollar contingency, which is standard. Obviously, this costed over fifty thousand, fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. So the contingency has ate up a little bit of that. The remaining thirty-nine thousand is what we're asking to take out of the contingency for the overall project. So that's where it would be funded out of. Staff does obviously feel that this is necessary. The work has been done, so yes, that is why we're here.
So the work was done before the council approved the funds?
I believe, is the work all done, Sal? Yes, sir?
Yes, and usually that's, in most change orders, that's what we do when they're small. We approve, we approve, we approve them in the field and stuff to get the work moving, so it doesn't hold up. And then we bring the change orders back to city council. There are occasions when they're really big and we have time, but in, in this instance, we had to approve them in the field.
So, understand that, but on this particular job, we had several discussions about what we were going to do for this facade removal and stuff, that, that we were doing this as a favor. And so this is a second increase, I believe, that we have had to this.
No, it's the.
It's the only one. The only change order that there will be as well.
And it's not changed the product on the ground, so no one has benefited from anything better.
The scope didn't change.
What has happened was, is that when the plans were drawn, there was only so much that they could see behind the scene. The buildings were old.
Yeah, Taekwondo was tied in differently than what we anticipated.
And so these were things that we agreed to, that the contractors, like, they couldn't have foreseen in the plan. We had to make adjustments in the field, and they've had to either have increased labor or increased cost to tie that, you know, new facility back in, and we agreed they were reasonable, they were reasonable expenditures that should be covered.
This was some kind of discovery work that was discovered after the.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sometimes it's just the, you know, every building was a little, well, not every building. A stretch of buildings was very similar, but once you got to the Taekwondo and then also around the Smith Arts Building, I call it the Smith Arts Building, they were slightly different, but the Taekwondo seemed to be the most problematic.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, I'll take a motion on it.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve change order one, an increase of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents for North Parking Place facade renovation for phase three of downtown revitalization project.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Seth.
I'll second.
A second from Councilman Broaddus. Any further comment or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Move on to item seven, award RFP two-two zero-six zero-zero-one, disaster debris management and monitoring to Thompson Consulting Services, who submitted the best proposal as recommended by the evaluation committee, Sabrina.
Our contract is up, and so we had to go back out. Amy put together the RFP when she got it on the heat here, then the, as you'll see, the council was myself, Cindy Dewitt, who's the public work superintendent, and then Brian Sidebottom being the emergency services manager at this time. We had a set list that we were looking at as far as how we were judging and weighing this. The three of us went through this separately, and then a couple of us got together and were able to get together and talk about it together. And then discussed with the third one as well. And we recommend Thompson. We've used Thompson before in the past. They also came in as a little bidder, so, but we have used Thompson before in the past. We were happy with their service. We didn't have any issues that went on there, so I see no reason to not award this. There were some really good candidates that we were looking at, but we know Thompson, and so I'd be happy to, to award this.
And this is a service that is required to be done if we're making a submittal to FEMA, if we have a big enough storm and we're submitting our debris disposal to them for reimbursement. It has to be monitored while it's being picked up and also at the TDSR. So yeah, if we're gonna submit, if we ever have any hope to get reimbursement from FEMA on an eligible storm, we would have to implement this.
So it wouldn't be like the debris we got stuck with?
Yeah, the storm wasn't big enough to be eligible for, Nicholas wasn't big enough a storm to be eligible for FEMA to come in.
But again, you have to have, you have to have the inspections, you have to have these people aligned, lined up before a storm comes in. Okay?
The government way.
The government way, that's right. All right, if there's any other questions, I'll take a motion on this item, item seven.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we award RFP twenty-two dash oh-six dash zero-zero-one, disaster relief management and monitoring to Thompson Consulting Services as recommended.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Sinhanya.
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Baker. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have item eight, approve repair of Sioux Main near Uncommon Market with CZ construction in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Sal.
And before Sal gets started, I want everyone to know we did speak with Uncommon Market, and so the owner there is aware and is more than willing to work with us. I've spoken to her on multiple occasions, so he's about to talk about a lot of nasty stuff, but they're aware and they're comfortable with what we're moving forward.
There's no choice, I don't think there's any choice, but anyway.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, Sal.
It's the nasty stuff, Sal. Yeah, I'm, I'm with the nasty stuff. I'm not with the rose colored glass stuff here. There is a line that you see there, and that schematic there that takes off. It brings the primary flows from the Wesatch area. It's gonna take some more flows now that the development is taking place at Lakewood. And this system has been taxed, taxed through the years. And of course, we, you don't really know exactly what's happening until you actually uncover some of the surprises that are on the ground. In this particular case, this line crosses Ocean Creek Drive, goes through McGarrett's Palm Shaw parking lot, through an eastment, ends up at the, at the alleyway behind those parking way, I mean, circle way businesses. Then it goes along an eastment that I don't know how it ever got in there. Used to be the old Duncey Hardware Store back in, back in the days. Now it's the Uncommon Market or whatever is now there. And it's a ten-foot eastment that we don't even know where it is, whether it's inside, whether it's half and half, between lot sixteen and, between lot sixteen and lot eighteen. But it so happens that there is a line underneath the wall there, basically. I don't know whether it's outside of the wall or was underneath the wall there. We didn't wanna, when we made a, when we made a repair to that, to that line back in the nineties or even before then, I really couldn't find the date when we, when it hit the project there. The option was to go in there and line that particular line. There's a twelve-inch line, a twelve-inch old concrete line. So we decided to go out there and slip line that thing, and by slip lining is introducing a, another line inside the, the main carrier. And in that case, at that time, there was a, a very first generation polyethylene line materials that, that we eventually used there, and in some force main applications coming from twenty-five. Through the years now, they are coming to a point where they are starting to crack, split open without any problem. So when we uncovered this new, we weren't supposed to be doing anything to this particular stretch. We felt like that eight-inch, or that slip lining was gonna be enough that we had put in there. When we opened the ground there and put in that lift, that manhole right at the very first manhole as it comes up from the businesses, we found out that this, that this was an eight-inch line inside a twelve-inch carrier, which is meant the main reason why we were experiencing through the years this particular overflow from that lift station system. We could have left it that way, but we decided to take the bull by the horns at that time in March, we found that out. We decided that we were gonna try to at least upgrade that line to what at least would be a more, a more size-to-size application there. We know that a twelve-inch, I mean, ten-inch PVC, which is what this new line is supposed to be doing, has the same carrying capacities, flow capacities that a existing twelve-inch line concrete pipe would have. So we decided to go that route, but we didn't know whether we were, we were gonna have enough monies left in the contingencies that, which is where the only source we have right now left in there. Megan mentioned that there was six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. We looked at the, we looked at the, we made an accounting, took an account and looked to see what we actually had left. And even after paying for this ninety-eight thousand dollar bill, we will still have six hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars left in the one oh nine oh that was originally given. Think Councilman Bottas asked us last time to see, okay, so what has now, how much of the work has been done and how much of this? It so happens that we're about forty percent of the project done downtown. That's how much expenditures we made.
But of course, this is not a change order with the contractor.
It is not a change order with the contractor. No, it is not.
Right, but it is contingency money. It's, yeah, it's taken from the same bank.
It is taken from the same thing, and the reason, we, we have a forty percent done, accomplished already in the project, and we have about thirty-seven percent of the contingency amount now being spent, even with this amount. So there's still sixty-three percent of that still left there. Hopefully, that will carry us on through with this, with this project, and we feel very, very comfortable that we will be able to because the surprises are gonna be lessened. As a matter of fact, they're probably gonna be reduced tremendously now. Now we know what we're working with. Yeah, yeah, and I know that.
Don't count your chickens.
Doesn't wanna look at the positive side of things and, but I'll, I'll take the positive side of things this time. But anyway, that's the reason why we're bringing it up now. We're at a point now where they have just poured the, the parking lot portion of the Roma, the Lake Theater area. They poured it today. So soon they will be finishing up. They're, they started, they, they started forming the portion, the travelway portion of that same segment, so they will be moving into that intersection, which is where that line runs. We didn't wanna do anything, we didn't wanna start doing this impact of pipe bursting because we were, you know, we felt like it could compromise whatever we're putting on top.
Again, Sal, what are the problems that you're seeing upstream?
We have an overflow of the system. The lift station overflows at several points along the red. And that is the main reason why we.
Because we can't, we can't push it through an eight-inch pipe.
Correct. And the fact is that Lakewood now is gonna be putting in a, a demand there that is gonna be sizable.
Lakewood also will be going through this.
Yes, Lakewood will be going through there, correct.
So I'm not saying we're not gonna do this, but just curious, what if we need some more money for downtown project? Where, where, if we overrun the contingency, where would the funds come from?
That's a good, that's a good question for our project manager.
Well. But Sal said we're not gonna have any more surprises.
I'll answer that, I'll answer that. That four hundred and ninety-eight thousand that we have for COVID that we have not allotted to, I would say now that we've eaten into this a little more than I thought we would, I would say that I, you know, we have recommendations for the wastewater treatment plant. We'll probably hold off that a little bit until this project gets closer to the end. And so we may hold off just as a, a safety cushion that we have some of that the contingency.
As I said, I, I'm very, I am very comfortable in saying that if we've only spent sixty-three, I mean, thirty-seven percent of the contingencies in about forty percent of the work, where most of the unknowns were.
Right.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't, we should be able to get.
Yeah, everything's above ground now.
Everything's above ground.
I haven't been over budget yet, sir.
As long as you don't ask.
What happens to unused contingency money? What does that?
You can use it within the scope.
So the contingency really is ours. It's not within the contract of the contractor. It's in our bank account. So at South Parking Place, I'll give you an example. We did not use all those funds. So later on, because they're bond funds, they were tied to downtown, we would continue to use those funds for projects downtown.
Landscaping, things like that.
Yeah, so after you finish plants and stuff, they still have to be tied to a downtown project, so.
Because it's bond money.
Because it's bond money.
Yeah, but we're currently allowed to do that. The state legislature wants us to, wants to take that flexibility away from us, though. They want us to have to take it back to the voters.
They just wanna make sure we do the job right, you know.
So if you have a hundred thousand left, you can't go spend it unless you take it back to voters. We wanna be able to spend it this way.
No, that's not about them wanting to do the job right. That's one control in Austin.
Yes, control. But they have been successful at that yet. So real last question is, is again, we're busting pipe underneath, we think, or hopefully it's between buildings, not underneath buildings. So what risks do we have there and how are we gonna handle it if we do any damage?
The, the reason why we also selected this, this particular group here is because it's a group that we are, that we have, I mean, have done a lot of work with and are very confident in the, in the way they approach their work. They are gonna be doing what we call impact pipe bursting from that portion of the, from here all the way down to, to the start of the, of the properties. And from that point on, they'll do not an impact pipe person. They will do a static pipe bursting. They will split the, and then push that thing without any impacts. So that's, that's the care or the, that we are trying to take, that take over this, in this general area. Once we pass the building itself, of course, it opens up, but we will keep this thing going all the way to the very end, to the very back of that, to where the alley is. From there on, we will also do a little bit of impact.
Yeah, 'cause I know we don't want five years down the road, the building owner come to us and say that we damaged their slab.
Yes, or their walls, or their anything, yes. As a matter of fact, I guess since we talked to them, did you also ask them to remove everything off of their walls?
I'll be helping them.
I guess, that's been the case in the past.
Maybe if, as long as it's on the teddy ba, teddy bear wall, it might not be that much of an issue. All right, all right, any other questions on this from Sal?
All right. All right. Any other questions on this from Sal? If not, I'll need a motion on item eight.
I'll make a motion to approve a repair of Suits Main near uncommon market. Would CV construction in amount not to see 100,000?
I have a motion from Councilwoman Baker.
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Seth. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
That's approved. We'll move on to item nine and this will be again, a standing agenda item until we make the final vote on the budget. So Modesto, you want to give us?
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed it. I wrote a beautiful communication on this, but I forgot to forward it to Sally. Uh, because I was noting a couple, several items that came up during the budget process. But there's really the only one change I have right now. Councilman Blanchard had asked if we could look at what the cost would be for the additional, I guess, new vests. Uh, for the police department. The chief came up with that cost. It was approximately 11,000 dollars and change. Uh, maybe 11,200 or 11,300. Um, I, my recommendation is that we can amend the equipment replacement fund. And take that project from a 52,000 dollar project to a 64,000 dollar project. We can get that in. And my rule of thumb is that we use is the amount of money that we have coming into the equipment replacement fund for payments is around 2.3 million. And the amount that we have going out is about 2.1 or 2.1 and a half. So we can absorb that 11,300. As long as we're not paying out more than what's coming in, we're good on the equipment replacement side. So we can get that in. There were a couple of other things that were follow up things, but this was the only one that was a cost item that we were looking at. Um, but again, I'll get that memo to you next time. But I think that's what I was hearing from council, that council wanted us to explore that.
Right, we wanted to get the, the numbers back, yeah.
And that doesn't make us rob Peter to pay Paul with anybody's budget. Everybody's.
Everything stays the exact same as presented.
Perfect. Yeah, it was, it was a lot more affordable than maybe we were thinking at the, at the meeting and so it was achievable.
We'll have to replace all this stuff next year anyway.
We would, next year, I mean, you're only delaying, I mean, if you didn't do it, you're just delaying the purchase next year. We would be, we'd be looking at, yeah, 12 or 13,000. So we can do it this year.
Okay. Anything else you want to report on that?
Um, Megan wants to follow up and talk to you about the strategic plan, which is part of the budget.
Yes, so this was not part of your proposed, but it will be part of the adopted. So when you adopt the regular budget, you also adopt the strategic plan for next year. Um, so I know that we've went through the strategic planning process. This is sort of your final copy. So the one that you'll want to review is the one that says 2022 on the front. I also gave you the final 2021 copy, which is for the year we're currently in. Um, so when you're flipping through the 2022, everything is in red is what was added from our strategic planning session. Um, so if you recall, when we broke off into rooms and council voted on, you know, whether you wanted an item to be added. I went through and added anything that got more than two votes to this strategic plan. The reason I also gave you a copy of the year we're currently in strategic plan is because. If you recall, staff went through and removed some items, but council also elected to remove items from last year's strategic, or from this current year's strategic plan. So I just wanted you to have a reference point so you can see what was taken off. If you have questions on why, we can definitely talk about this. I wanted you to have time to review it. So take these home and at the next council meeting during the same, the same item, you could bring up any questions or comments. If you have questions about why something wasn't added, feel free to ask myself or Modesto, but. And I have a list, like I've kept everything from the strategic planning. So if you're wondering what the vote was on something, you know, why chickens weren't added, anything like that, I have everything, so feel free to come ask.
Okay.
So this will probably be. Facilities. So we'll start bringing the fee components part of the budget that we really didn't get to talk about in the budget session. Again, I'll give you this wonderful memo that I sent out that summarized anything. But if we're missing anything, uh, that, you know, you felt, that we failed to maybe discuss, this is the opportunity to talk about it.
Anything for council on this item for now? All right, we'll move forward on to item 10, construction updates.
Again, before Sal gets up here, the only thing I have, we have our next meeting with the downtown businesses next Thursday, July 28th. Um, the Zoom link is the exact same. We're also doing it in person. They have all been invited. If anyone wants to join or if you plan on joining, please just let me know so I make sure we don't have a quorum. Whether that's virtual or in person, so, but you're more than welcome to attend.
Well, thank you. Some, somehow the, the work hasn't really ginned up the way it should be. Not because, not because the contract isn't fine. Uh, concrete is always, you know, has a, has an effect on this particular project. Uh, but even with that, they are still continuing, like I said before, they poured portion of that Lake Theater area. They have also, they have also continued now, they poured the, the sidewalk at the very intersection of that way and circle way. At the local and they are now continuing on along the local. If you've gone through there, they are working on the ramping. Which is very elaborate in that, in that local area. For some reason, it is elaborate. Uh, taking some of the old sidewalk today. As a matter of fact, they were tearing that out there. They are planning on just continuing on with that sidewalk all the way through that stretch. Uh, crossing into the, into La Bodega and from at La Bodega, they will be now putting that little area, concrete area between the sidewalk. And the actual, the actual building there, creating a nice little, a little alfresco area for them. Uh, so they are continuing and at the same time, this thing is happening, the brick people have caught up now for the most part. On that new construction that has been completed there. So once, once they pour the concrete, the sidewalks out. Then we will open that particular segment from, you know, from where they started around, around the circle way. So that people can then re, regain that traffic situation there.
Sal, are they still, are they back to their original contractor for, vendor for concrete?
Yes, they're back to the same, to their original contractor, correct. Uh, they have slow deliveries, but you know, at least they're constant. So there shouldn't be any problem. On the, uh. Let me just go on down the, down the line here. Uh, and if you want to, Sabrina, if you want to jump in some of these, into some of these projects. The Beachwood Chemical Building is still out in, in the hands of the TCQ, waiting for their, their approval. For that particular plan to continue on. Uh, on the. And I'll let, I'll let Robin take care of her end of their projects, which she, she has there. Uh, the North Parking Place renovation, that was the final, the final thing. We haven't, we still have their retainage. We still haven't done their final walkthrough. Or nor the Windstorm, uh, the Windstorm certification by the, the Windstorm Engineering. On lift station number one system evaluation, we did receive a preliminary engineering report. For the upsizing of lift station, lift station number one. And you do have a, an opinion of cost for that particular project, which I think Mr. Mundo has mentioned in the past. Which is 11 million dollar, 11 and a half million dollar project there. So from now on, what we have is we took in their information. We brought up some questions to them so they could go back in there and respond to those things. Mr. Sanchez has been asking them about, about the pump, about the pumping. Uh, systems that they're proposing to do, even though they are going to stay with the same pumps that they have right now. Uh, to save some of the money, which I believe is still ample. They are of, of the, you know, of the capacity. That this particular flow will lead. We're looking primarily at the routing of the force man and the, where they can, you know, where they can go actually legally go. And that is one of the things that they've been taking back to them for, for some, for some more answers. On the project for Pin Oak, Post Oak and everything on those bond issue projects. Uh, we met with the engineer. Uh, we discussed the realignment of that particular street. He had questions on how it was going to be affecting the driveways. We gave him some direction. And they are proceeding now with getting the preliminary plans for us to be able to review in the next, the next few weeks. Uh, P Gal on the above ground fuel tanks has begun the engineering, the surveying for, for that particular project. They're picking up all the information on the ground, on the field. On the tanks mixer improvements, you just approved that 331,000 dollar project. And so that is going to be, you know, put out to them as an award. And then to start the paperwork that they need to provide us prior to commencing of that work.
Whenever you have a timeline for that, could you just update us on that? When they, when they should be start and finish?
Okay, they originally started the, they, they gave us a July 20, you know, July start of work. But I don't think that's going to happen. It's going to, it's going to be delayed till probably about mid, mid August. They had a completion date of September, so I'm going to, I'm going to say it's going to be the end of September before they finish that project. The headwork improvements, we are meeting with them this coming week to do a kickoff meeting with them. And that is the extent of it.
Thank you, Sal.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sal?
No, just a, a comment that we saw.
It's gone.
No, are you okay?
No.
Just a comment, just general comment. If you haven't been out there, seen them working downtown. They're, they're a pretty nifty machine pouring the, what they call a curb, you know, and the, and this machine just does, just the curbing. So it just go along and just forms a curb and.
It's a whole separate company.
Yeah, it's really interesting, so.
If we could have a machine that does sidewalks.
Yeah.
No, repair sidewalks. We don't want a sidewalk, do a repair sidewalks.
All right, uh, so we have half cent. Got anything to update? Done, okay. All right. Thank you very much for the updates and then we'll move on to items of community interest. Uh, Chase, start with you this time. You have any community updates, items of interest?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, all right. Vane?
None, none here.
Rhonda? Matt? JB? You're not going to tell us how much you won. I don't know.
Still here though.
Yeah, just a couple of updates, um, real quick. Uh, we do, like you said, on the, in the, uh, consent agenda, we accepted the opening, the resignation from traffic. Uh, so we have one opening on traffic that we'll have to fill next, make next meeting. And unless the numbers change, we've got at least 12 applicants for that. Uh, I have chosen and my recommendation for, for us is, is that, because normally whenever we have an opening after we've done the June big deal. We don't invite people in for invitations to, to come to us. So what you'll do is, is Sally will get all of us the application information. Uh, there's contact information there. If you want to call the individuals and talk to them, that's up to you. But on the first, our meeting, we will, one of the items we'll do is we'll select a replacement for that traffic position. If that's all right with you folks. I'm not a big fan of bringing people in for the invite to interview. It's, it's, we really don't ask them a lot of questions and so. All right, so that's, unless y'all have an issue with that, that's the way we'll address it. Um, one other thing also is that last Friday, had opportunity to walk around the rec center with Modesto and Robin. And one of the things that we went and looked at, she showed us some of the stuff that she's got going on there. But we went into the gym and the gym is in, the lighting in gym is, needs some help. Uh, we've had some complaints with the pickleball folks and I had a call today. And they're wanting to know how to write a check and give a donation. So you may be seeing a check. But then when I told them about the numbers we're looking at, I don't know, I may have scared them off. But anyway, what, what we agreed upon, Modesto was, is that he went ahead and gave Robin the go ahead to, because of supply chain issues and stuff like that. Is, is go ahead and, and find out what we can get, how much it's going to cost, get the order in place. And if we have to pay for it before the new budget, well then we'll pay for it out of this budget and then we'll take it out of her next year's budget on maintenance. At least that's the plan right now.
Yeah, it's in the proposed budget.
Right.
But you just can't start the project on number one. So we're trying to see if we can start it early.
But it's, the, the lighting is, is got to a condition where it, we need to address it right away. And it's going to be new fixtures and everything. So it should be, we'll get it back up to speed quickly. And as we talked about traffic and the last thing is, is, you know, again, going back, talking about this grant discussion that we had. Uh, I've had some conversation with Modesto about maybe a different approach with this. And to simplify it, instead of having people jump through a hoop of going and spending dollars on a facade. And then getting dollars back, getting some amount back. Because most other businesses, they're not going to spend a thousand dollars on a facade to get 500 dollars back. I mean, they're, they're struggling enough as it is. And so one of the options is looking back at during, take, most of the businesses, a lot of the small businesses were shut down. Because the governor for a year's period, some what, some was shorter, some was less. And look at what kind of costs that they had to, uh, city costs that they had to expand during that time period. Without any operation going, be it their water bill, be it their, you know, their base rate, be it their dumpster and so forth. See what that comes up to and that may be, uh, a number that we can work within the 200,000 dollars that Modesto has set aside. But we're still, Modesto and, or.
Yeah, James.
James are working on them.
James probably is in shock because I haven't given them that assignment yet.
All right, you got an assignment. So anyway, that's another approach that makes it, that would make it very simple of is basically all somebody wanted to do is apply for their grant is say that. My business was still, I still had the business and I was shut down for. And we were even going to the point of saying, instead of saying you're shut down for six months, eight months or whatever. If you're shut down, then we'll draw a line somewhere, maybe four months or whatever. But basically we'd just say, we'll, we'll, we'll go back and we'll reimburse you for a year's worth of those costs. And that will probably come close to, well, just the water side is, I think I calculated, we had 450 businesses. And if all of them applied at 31 bucks base rate, that's 167,000 dollars, I think.
So this would, this would no longer be a small business.
It'd be a small business. No, it'd be a small business. We'd still focus towards small business.
And so we would still need to define that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the mayor, I think you'll have some discussion. Right now, we're just trying to.
We're just trying to.
Just trying to get some data for the mayor on this idea of, I mean, I really can't tell you how many businesses we have. I've seen it, but how that makeup is of small business, big business, I, I don't know. On there and then what's the, you know, the sanitation bill and then what? Cause it's all over the map, so we'll get that data to you. It may only wind up being whatever council puts as a guideline. It may be 200 businesses that would qualify and then you could see how much they spent on city costs during COVID.
Again, my, my only hope is, is that bring back a recommendation to, to council of a, of a grant program. That is very simple and doesn't require a business to jump through a bunch of hoops to, to get some funding back.
I have a question. So you said business will close down. How about businesses like restaurants that didn't close down? But they relied on just delivery food or break up food.
I understand and that's, we'll, we'll work through those details once we figure out if it's, it's a reasonable, if, if it's a reasonable option. Yes. Okay, that's all I've got. Staff, anything? All right, uh, if not, we'll adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.